Gentlemen, please remove your hats and everyone please silence all electronic equipment. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated and violators are subject to ejection and possible prosecution.
La Junta de el Concilio de la Ciudad de Socorro está por empezar. Caballeros, favor de quitarse las cachuchas, sombreros y todos favor de poner en silencio todo equipo electrónico. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento perjudicial o revoltoso. A quien no siga estas reglas se le sacará y puede ser infraccionado.
It is 6:03 PM. This meeting is called to order. Item number two, pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establishment of quorum. Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevaris.
Here.
Alejandro García.
Here.
Mayor Ivy Avalos.
Here.
Rudy Cruz.
Present.
And Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
Yes, here.
Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you. Item number four, public comment. We have several speakers, mayor. Our first speaker, Maribel Lara. Ms. Lara, you have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon. My name is Maribel Lara, a longtime member of the community of the city of Socorro. I grew up in the area and now own my own home in the area as well. I graduated from Socorro High School and made sure my kids experience what I did, which is to be in a peaceful, safe community. That is why I'm here to speak on behalf of my community regarding the rezoning of Lot 11 located on 367 Odaca. Most of our community members are retired and of ages 40 and above and have lived in the community for 30 years or more. We have all paid our taxes to the city of Socorro for many years and have been proud to say we are from Socorro. I come here today to have our voices heard. We ask that Mayor Ivy Avalos and every member present here today to please acknowledge our concerns and issues presented today. As some of us stated and made it clear on the last meeting, the following reasons need to be considered before making a decision. Community property will decrease in value. For example, if these apartments are built in the street 366 Odaca, they're going to be built in between residential area. That means that if we try to sell our homes, we're going to have a hard time selling them because nobody's going to want to live in front of these apartments, right in front of them with chaos. So our property values are going to go down. So that's one of the concerns that we have. The other thing is there's lack of space, traffic, there's safety issues. If I know that when they do a background check, they put applications, but a lot of times we don't know who the renters are going to be. Even if they pass their background checks, we still don't know who they are. Those are some of the concerns. Traffic, the limited space in front is very limited. So if we have, according to the owner, there's going to be parking inside, there's no way that there can be parking inside for families. Most of the families have at least two cars, so they're going to take up the parking inside. But if they have visitors, they're going to take out the parking outside if they have, you know, more than one visitor. So we're going to have people coming in and out at all hours of the day. So the owner of Lot 11, address 367 Odaca, is only thinking about his financial gain, but lacks understanding of how this will affect the community members.
Ms. Lara, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Maria Lara?
I'm sorry?
Maria Lara.
Oh, she's there. Her mistake.
Liliana Lara? Ms. Lara, you have three minutes.
I actually do have something to present, if you'll allow me. I have visuals for you, just to kind of add to what my sister was saying, if that's okay.
Will council suspend the rules?
So this is on item 11. I don't know if you want to wait till we get to that item and then allow them to present or do you want them to do it during public comment?
Well, hold on. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for the public speaker to present her items and then when item 11 comes up, then our city planner can present her items and then we can compare the two, if the council wishes to. That's my recommendation.
Your motion.
My motion, I'm sorry.
Will anyone second?
Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro García.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
Yes.
So my name is Liliana Lara and I'm here to kind of give you a little visual guide of what my sister was talking about. If we can go to the next slide. So I'm going to be covering the multifamily lots, the lot size comparison, proposed plans, space concern and road conditions. So these are the two multifamily complexes that are in the neighborhood right now. Both of them are on corner lots with plenty of space for parking. They're not obstructing the neighboring houses and you'll be able to see the lots are bigger than the one in 367 Odaca. If we can go to the next slide. Thank you. And here you can see two different properties, one on 531 Zibu Road in comparison to the one on 367 Odaca. The lot on Zibu is spacious enough for multiple parking and for the buildings that are there. The other lot is 367 Odaca and as you can see, the lot is significantly smaller, if we can go to the next slide. Here is another alternative view of another property that's on 450 Bowman Road with multifamily complexes as well in comparison. And as you can see that the view showcases that there's plenty of amount of space outside for parking. And that other one was also on a corner lot as well. These were the proposed plans for what's supposed to be happening on 367. I know it's not a three-story anymore. It's supposed to be a two-story and I apologize, these pictures are a little bit blurry. But as you can see, they want to do landscaping, they want to fit the buildings in there and they also want to do parking spaces. But as you can see from the other pictures, I'm not sure how they're going to fit all of that in there. Next slide. And then here you can kind of see the dimensions and you can see the actual lots and the other family homes that are around the area as well. And you can also kind of see that all of the structures that are around there are just single-family homes and they kind of want to build this multifamily structure right in the middle of the street. And a lot of the other apartments that they have in the area are on corner lots and they're not really obstructing all of the houses around them and there's a lot of space there. Next slide, please. And these pictures are just to kind of show the space from the street, which kind of looks spacious when you look at it, but if there's going to be people visiting and they're going to need additional parking, you can see that there's not much space outside in front of the properties. So this one is facing down the street. The picture on the right is actually the lot that they want to build on and you can see that there's not a lot of space there. And then next slide, please. These are the road conditions on our street right now. It is a highly trafficked area. As you can see, these are pictures that I took a week ago and there's a lot of potholes here and you can see that there's evidence that we have other potholes that have been filled in in the past. So it is a high-traffic area. And then, thank you so much. That was just... So you can kind of see the comparison between the other lots that have been built on as well as the one that they want to currently build on, kind of to see the area where it's located and the space that's available for parking and things like that. So yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ma'am, do you mind if we save the presentation? Yes? Save it.
Señor Lara tiene tres minutos.
¿Puedo hablar en español?
Sí, señor.
Bueno, yo nada más quería contestar la pregunta del otro día que se estaban basando a los apartamentos que existen ahí en la fábula Itelóp. De que preguntó a alguien que quién había dado ese permiso para hacer esos apartamentos. Y como nosotros tenemos ahí aquel vecinos que vivimos ahí desde los 80 y nos damos cuenta exactamente que esos apartamentos apenas daba Socorro tratando de independizarse cuando los hicieron. Entonces, no sé cómo estuvo que los hicieron, pero ahí en esa área no había gente todavía. No vivían más que Pedro, Eri, Eri y Guerrero, Socorro. Y estaba limpio, no había casas todavía cuando hicieron esos apartamentos. Entonces, lo que quiero decir yo, que lo que queremos nosotros es conservar el área residencial. Si esos apartamentos ya existen, nosotros lo que queremos es tratar de que ya no invadan más con apartamentos, que ya están eso. Entonces nosotros ahí, por ejemplo, pues no queremos que hagan más, ¿verdad? Entonces, pues la cuestión es que ahí en la Odaca también donde quieren hacer los apartamentos, ahí nomás vivíamos tres personas también. Donde quieren hacer el apartamento, Marcial y yo llegamos ahí en los 80. Entonces, pues ahí se ha conservado todo el tiempo residencial, ¿no? No entiendo yo por qué ahora quieran hacer una zona de apartamentos nomás en un terreno. No sé qué beneficio tenga Socorro con cambiar un terreno de zona. Si yo pienso que el beneficio va a ser del dueño que lo quiere hacer ahí. Pues es todo.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Juan Lara.
Señor Lara tiene tres minutos.
Oiga, pues yo tengo entendido que los apartamentos se hacen en áreas con calles grandes. Yo es lo que yo he mirado, ando revisando muchas partes y los apartamentos por los regulares están en calles que no hay tráfico, que hay mucho tráfico, pues como la North Loop o lugares así, la Socorro allá. Pero en calles, en calles ahí donde vivimos nosotros, esos apartamentos que él dice que hicieron, esos no había nadie todavía en el tiempo aquí, ni permiso siquiera tienen esos para hacerlos cuando los hicieron. Y ahora quieren cambiar un terreno nomás para hacer apartamentos donde son puras casas. Vive pura gente tranquila ahí. ¿Para qué queremos ahí problemas? Siempre los apartamentos traen problemas, aunque digamos que no. Porque sabrá Dios quién entra y quién sale ahí. Mi hija vivía en unos frente de unos apartamentos ahí en Wichita y ellas están tomando ahí afuera y con la música dándole. O sea, nosotros no queremos eso ahí en esa área. Queremos que siga siendo tranquila. Además, ya contamos muchas firmas, todos los que están inconformes, de que no quieren ahí nada de eso. Por favor. Gracias.
Mayor, those were all our speakers. Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro García.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
Yes.
Moving on to regular agenda, public hearing and ordinances, item number 11, public hearing of an ordinance to allow the rezoning of Lot 11, Block 15, Friedman Estates, Number 2, 1966 Fleetwood HT 10 by 58, SN Number WFF6V55135, located at 365 Odaca Way, Socorro, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Medium Density Residential to allow a four-unit maximum multifamily residential development. It is now 6:20 PM. Public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak on this item? It is a public hearing. Gabriel González is signed up to speak on this item.
Good afternoon, especially to City Council. The presentation... Yes. Well, I'm here to present the project, the desired project for 367 Odaca Way and I want to express with you that every single item that was done on this presentation...
I'm sorry?
He's the applicant who will be presenting on item 12.
Oh, you're...
Right now, public hearing.
Oh, they told us 11. Okay, so...
It's a public hearing.
Okay.
Sorry, yes.
Well, again, you know, every single item that was taken into consideration about this desired project, it was done under code. It was not under...
I'm sorry. No, it's a public hearing, so anybody else that'd like to speak at this moment besides the applicant?
Okay.
You'll be speaking on number 12.
Not right now, then.
No, right now.
Sorry.
I just want to note that the people that spoke up were all speaking on item 11. I just want to note that the people that spoke up were all speaking on Item 11.
Yes.
So that could be counted as a public hearing, but that's why they spoke up.
They spoke up on public hearing.
Because they're against the project.
Alguien más que quisiera hablar sobre el tema, el número 11?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Socorro Gandarilla. Es con respecto al tema de los apartamentos. Pienso que estamos en un área muy tranquila y queremos, y nos gustaría seguir así. Los departamentos a veces hay, no a veces, siempre hay problemitas. Y nosotros ya tenemos muchos años ahí viviendo y nos gusta estar en paz y vivir a gusto, como siempre hemos estado. Gracias.
Gracias.
Alguien más que quiera hablar?
Sorry, the neighbor, the neighbor just asked. Yes, it's a neighbor. I just wanted to read something from, I read, I was reading the history of Socorro and how the city came about. And I just wanted to read a little piece of what I found on the article. I found it from the Texas State Historical Association. And it says, "In 1985, the town blocked El Paso's plan to annex the town and voted by a margin of 263 votes to remain a separate corporation. Since then, Socorro has adopted ordinances and codes to halt uncontrolled growth." So with that being said, Mayor Avalos, you know, we, I know when your campaign, you said, "Let your voices be heard." So we're asking to please hear our voices and, you know, put a halt to this uncontrolled growth that's being done. If this is gonna be done, then we're gonna have more and more complexes and more and more uncontrolled, you know, safety issues. So all we ask is that we remain a single-family community. So with that being said, we just, I just wanted to add that. If you can all please just consider that. And if you see his plans, I don't see any way he can fit all this into that small lot that's in between all these homes that's surrounding them. If it were two lots, it would be understanding, or if it was in a corner lot, but it's in the middle of our homes. So, you know, with that being said, we ask that you please, please consider all the issues that we are bringing up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers?
Hi. Just to, just to add to that, too, I know it sounds like we're opposed to building in that area, but we're not. If he was building maybe, you know, another home that fits with our area, it's residential. We always welcome our neighbors in, and I've been there my entire life as well. So we, we wanna have brand-new neighbors, we wanna have people added to our community. We're not opposed to having something built there. We were under the impression that it was another house, so, you know, we're, we actually, you know, are a little bit close to our neighbors. We don't have an issue with anybody there, and we would be happy to have someone else there. It's just the issue of having the apartments that it's multifamily. There's a lot of people there, and like everyone has been saying, it's like a safety concern as well. As much as you try to bring in people that are, you know, good for the area, sometimes a couple slip through, we don't know who's gonna get there, and we've already been having issues in the area with teenagers. So we don't know if we're gonna have families moving in with more teenagers and with apartments and everything. So we're just concerned with a lot of those things. So we're not opposed to having our community grow with more families, it's just, it's a single-family resident, residential area, and that's why we want you to consider what we're trying to present today. And like my sister said, the lot is literally in the middle of the street with surrounding houses. It's all of our houses around. It would be different, like the apartments that I presented earlier that are on the corner lots. Those don't bother anybody because it's on a corner lot, they have a lot of space there. If they happen to have get-togethers or anything, it doesn't obstruct anyone. So we don't have issues with that. The issue is the size of the lot with everything that wants to, that he wants to build there and the location of it. So those are just our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As there are no more speakers, public hearing is now closed at 6:28 PM. Item number 12, second reading and adoption of an ordinance to allow the rezoning of Lot 11, Block 15, Friedman Estates, Number 2, 1966, Fleetwood, HT 10 by 58, SN Number WF6V55135, located at 367 Hodaque Way, Socorro, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Medium Density Residential, to allow a four-unit maximum multifamily residential development. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Loreen Kimito, Planning and Zoning. Item 12 is a rezoning for 367 Hodaque Way. As a summary, the request of the applicant is to rezone the property from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Multi-Family, Medium Density Residential, to allow for a multifamily residential development. The size of the lot is 10,625 square feet, just shy of a quarter of an acre in size. The land use currently is vacant, and the request is to approve the rezoning from R1 to R2 to allow multifamily residential development of four units. Staff recommends approval of the request with a condition to approve the site plan to a maximum of four units. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this request at their February 21st meeting and concurred with staff's recommendation to approve the request with the approved site plan, limited to four units per acre for the lot. The location map shows the lot. It is just southwest of Passmore and Peters. The zoning map shows that it is currently R1, the area around the block is R1 with one R2 just north on Telop, and then the R3 on the corner lot of Telop and Favela. The medium-density R2 on Telop was approved in 2013, that is a duplex, and the one on the corner is a quad with two stories. Here are some pictures of the property, as you can see, it's vacant. And then, the aerial does show a previously existing structure on the lot. Notification was sent to property owners within 200 feet of the surrounding property, notifying them of the public hearing. And the site plan that being, that is being submitted shows on the next slide the dimensions, which are pretty close to what the previous commenter mentioned. That's 80 feet by 125 feet. The black shows the footprints of the buildings. Each building would have two floors with two units. They have onsite ponding to the rear of the property, they've included landscaping and 10 parking spaces, and they show the ingress and egress to and from the property. We did receive opposition. They presented a signed petition, 33 signatures opposing the change, as well as a letter. We had five speakers again speak in protest of the request at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and largely spoke to traffic concerns, though with the street, Hodaque, and the access to the neighborhood. And finally, the, in summary, the staff did recommend approval, does recommend approval of the rezoning request with the condition that the site plan be limited to the four units on the lot. And staff can answer any questions at this time that you all might have.
We do have the applicant that would like to present to you.
And we need a motion.
I'm sorry?
We need a motion.
Motion to open for discussion.
Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevárez.
Yes.
Alejandro García.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia López.
Yes.
Discussion.
Do you have questions?
No, we want to hear the applicant. Can we have the applicant approach the podium? Good afternoon again. Well, I'm here to present again the project of 367 Hodaque, which I believe is a great project, it's a beautiful project. Why? Because every single item was taken into consideration, the density of the area of the floor plan, you're gonna see in just a second. I know a lot of people are concerned about the parking spaces, but again, you know, everything was done following code, architectural code, the city of Socorro code, where basically all the, for the desired units, which are four units, they're gonna have plenty of space inside the property. They're not gonna be parking outside the property, which I know that's one of the main concerns from the public here. Next slide, please. As you can see, it's going to be four units. Those basically are projects, existing projects within the city of El Paso, within different cities of parts of the state of Texas. As you can see, again, you know, all depends how you're gonna go and design, you know, your, the units, that's how you're gonna can take advantage of the site itself. Next slide. Here, again, you have seen this one, which is going to be the site plan. We decided to keep the same parking spaces to avoid that potential problem or actually a concern for many people. Now, we have reduced, before it used to be six units, now we have reduced it to four units, following the recommendation from the zoning and planning board. As you can see, we kept the same amount of parking spaces, width are gonna be inside the property itself. Landscaping is going to be there, following what the code mandates. And not only that, as you can see, how the vehicles are gonna be entering the property, how the vehicles are gonna be exiting the property. Next slide. That's going to be a floor plan of how the apartments are gonna be created, just a quick conceptual unit, unit plan. Two-bedroom units, it's not gonna be anything big, like many people believe it's gonna be like a, I don't know, 10-story or something like that. It's going to be something minimal. So again, it's not gonna change, you know, it's not gonna create any big impact to the existing area. Next slide. That's going to be the construction elevations, how the apartments will be looking at, depending where you're looking at the view of the apartments. Next slide, please. And then, again, another perspective, how the apartments are gonna be looking from within the property itself. Next slide. Another perspective, next slide, please. Again, this is a current picture of the current apartments, they're in the, basically in the following street. As you can see, and you can compare, you know, the project, the project of 367, to this project is going to be so different. There's gonna be no vehicles parked on the street, like in this example, and again, it's going to be the same density in the way. The trash can is going to be inside the property, it's not gonna be outside the property. And again, that's going to be, I know, I do understand it's in a corner, but again, I see an opportunity to create something nice, something well-designed, and something within, following the rules, that is not gonna affect anyone at all. Next slide, please. And then again, you know, yeah, basically, so you can see the current distance from the current apartments to the 367 Hodaque, that's less than five minutes walking. Again, another view from the, from the current apartments, they're in the corner. Again, there's going to be a much different project compared to the one existing there. And as you can see, the city of Socorro, while at least this area, it does not have a, I gotta say, a pattern, where you can see home, 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 home. Here, you can see a house, a mobile home, an empty lot, and again, that's the reason why I request an opportunity, you know, to create these apartments, because I believe, I don't think it's going to create a big impact to the current area of, specifically of this area, area of the city of Socorro. Again, this project was done by an architectural firm. It was not leave up to interpretation of parking spaces, of density, landscaping was also taken into consideration. Every single item that we have done so far, it was following the rules, and it was following the, you know, the appropriate steps, you know, to make it, to make it happen, and to request the rezoning for this specific lot itself. And that's the, that's the end of my presentation. Thank you so much.
Would you stay up there, please, in case we have questions?
Oh, do you have to?
Yes, please.
I don't have to.
Does anybody have questions?
I do.
Mr. Cruz?
Hey, good evening. I appreciate you presenting to us and explaining...
I can, they're talking in the back, I can hear.
I'm sorry, what?
So I appreciate the explanation of the project, and so I wanted to address, I guess, some of the concerns from the residents here in Socorro. And I know that the planning and zoning, along with our staff, have recommended that this project move forward based on the facts that you are well within the city ordinances and the rules that this city has created for development in residential areas.
Yes, sir.
At the same time, there was some concerns about, and Ms. Kimito, our city planner, there was a concern about property value going down with this type of development. Is that true or false? Does it add value or decrease value?
That's a very difficult question to answer, because there are a lot of different things that impact the property valuation. The Central Appraisal District has a process that they follow, and it can be based on the sale of prices in and around the neighborhood, comparable price, comparable properties in other parts of the neighborhood. We cannot say whether or not one project would increase or decrease the values of the properties around it, unless we're something very drastic, like a multimillion-dollar home. It's a little difficult to say that it would or wouldn't. Investment is always seen as a positive thing.
Yeah, so it's unknown, so that can be extracted. Now, should somebody go in there and build a mansion on that property, then that would increase everybody else's property taxes in the area, if I'm not mistaken, yes or no?
Again, you know, it all depends, it all depends based from my understanding, the appraisal district is the one in charge of assigning all that. Again, you can go and appeal, because let's say that this, I didn't want to create an apartment, let's say I wanted to create one house. What, I went crazy, now the house is what, worth 700,000 dollars? That doesn't mean that the neighbor is going to be affected because I built an expensive house.
Or...
From my understanding, El Paso District, El Paso Appraisal District, they see every single case by case, meaning house by house, it all depends.
So then, my next question is, there was concerns about the individuals who may occupy the apartment complex.
Yes, sir.
Is this a low-income, is this a HUD type of project? Is this a low-income? Are you doing background checks? What does something like this cost monthly for an individual or individuals to move into each unit?
Well, obviously, sir, you know, there's gonna be a process, it's going to be an investment. We're not gonna allow anyone to come in just because. You know, why? Because I'm gonna go and take care of this. You know, it's taken me a lot of effort, you know, it's taken me quite challenge, you know, to create this project. So believe me, I'm gonna be the first one to take care of that. So yes, there's going to be background checks, so yes, there's gonna be, I'm gonna be the first one taking a close eye...
What does something like this cost monthly for an individual or individuals to move into each unit?
Well, obviously, sir, you know, there's going to be a process, it's going to be an investment. We're not going to allow anyone to come in just because. You know, why? Because I'm going to go and take care of this. You know, it's taken me a lot of effort, you know, it's taken me quite challenge, you know, to create this project. So believe me, I'm going to be the first one to take care of that. So yes, there's going to be background checks, so yes, there's going to be, I'm going to be the first one taking a close eye, you know, to tools moving into this apartments itself. I'm going to be the first one, you know, taking that into consideration.
Are you a resident of Socorro yourself?
I'm not, my sister is. She lives in Valle del Mar. Obviously, I'm not going to tell the address, because I don't know, you know, what happened after this. Valle del Mar. So again, I used to live here in Socorro, actually, years ago, but not anymore. Thank you.
I couldn't hear.
Someone in the public is asking if he can respond to a comment that was made.
No, I'm sorry. We'd have to suspend the rules, no? In order for them to speak? Does council, will council entertain motion to suspend rules for this person to speak?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevarez.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz. And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Señor, si puede?
Yo trabajé aquí en Odessa cuando andan el oil field, y yo vivía en apartamentos. Y ahí había pleitos. Ahí nos chequeaban el background también. Y de todos modos había pleitos. La gente de diferentes morenos, mexicanos, o de lo que fuera, salían de pleitos, se ponían a tomar ahí afuera, andaban con la música, lo que daba, y molestaban, aunque no quieran. A todos los revisaban el background, y de todos modos hay cosas que pasan ahí. Yo lo vivía en persona. Eso es lo que yo le quería decir, que no es cierto. Si les pueden chequear el background, pero ya que no están ahí, es otra cosa. Es todo lo que quería decir.
Gracias. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Will you be engaging maybe with a real estate company to have a property manager, or is this that you're going to be doing yourself?
No, no, yeah, obviously, there's going to be a property manager is going to be involved once apartments are built.
Okay.
There's going to be a process, there's going to be a process, you know, for the people moving in. I mean, I'm not going to be doing just by myself. I have my own job and all that aside, but again, there's going to be, and it's going to be handled the right way, the professional way, because again, that's the way I want to treat it. That's the reason why, again, I'm not leaving anything into interpretation, like, I used to live in Georgia, or in Odessa, or anything like that. You know, I'm going to the current situations here from Socorro, I'm going to go and do the best of keeping, you know, the, we're not bothering the neighbors at all, so they can basically not even tell that those apartments are there. Why? Because again, it's going to be my investment, so why not? If I don't take care of my investment, I mean, it doesn't make any sense.
Maintenance as well?
Oh, yeah, maintenance, maintenance as well. As you can see on the site plan, part of the required, not because I wanted to do landscape to make it look nice, because it's required, obviously, to take care of that, the ponding, all that. Again, the trash can is not going to be outside the property, it's going to be, there's a specific design area to have the trash can inside the property. Every single item, like I said before, I see this project to have a lot of opportunity, that's why we hire an architectural firm to do every single item that you see here. I didn't do it myself, again, it was done by professionals, that they know the rules, not because, or they believe that they know the rules, or they live in somewhere else, no, they know the specific codes from the Citos Socorro, that's why, you know, everything was done. And actually, the logo of the company is, of the architectural firm is there, too, on the presentation.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Villalobos?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm sorry I'm not there today, but I just want to let the residents know that this is not an easy task for us. We see this more and more regularly, and I hear your concerns. I have eight, I'm sorry, I can hear somebody in the background. Is somebody talking to me?
No.
No, okay. I have the same situation where I'm at. I'm right at the dead end. They're building a hundred and ninety-eight houses here. And I understand where you're coming from, seriously. I wish I don't, I would not have a hundred and ninety-eight houses being built really close, I mean, right next to me. I'm concerned about, I am concerned about the lot, the size of the lot. Unfortunately, I think our ordinances state that you can build, following the rule, or this gentleman, or this company is following the rules. And I know that planning and zoning, the staff recommended to approve. I get that, and I understand where you're coming from, a hundred percent. But I would like to ask our attorney, Mr. Martinez, or who's our attorney today, Mr. Martinez?
Monica Perez.
Oh, Monica. Ms. Perez, I have a question. They are following, he is following all the rules. What repercussions can be taken if not approved for the city of Socorro?
The, right now, it's gone through the process, and so they have legally met all the requirements that are under the ordinances, and so really, at this point, it's up for, to city council to decide whether they want to approve or reject this.
It's a very difficult decision, very difficult decision. And I just want to let you know that, you know, we're with you, we understand you, we completely do, unless we turn around and have to change the ordinance for, you know, something that is more suitable because of the size, or the load, or even the lot. But at this point, you know, they're following the rules, the ordinances, and so, you know, I will leave it up to council, see how this is going to be voted, but I just wanted you to understand that it has nothing to do with the mayor, she doesn't have the power to absolutely, you know, shut this program down. We don't have individually power to set it down as well, just to let you know. But, you know, we understand, I understand, especially me, I'm a real estate agent, by the way. Council wanted to tell you that not necessarily it will not appreciate your value of your property, it might hinder only because it's in a dupla, or a quad dupla, next door, but if you look around El Paso, if you look everywhere, I mean, buildings exist, and, you know, they have not been done because of property value, but it is, it can hinder the area, so, to the purchaser, by the way, not to an individual purchaser. Thank you.
Mr. Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor, and council. Sir, your last name, I didn't get it.
That was, sir?
Your last name?
Gonzalez.
Mr. Gonzalez, I think that this council and everyone in the meeting here today can agree that it's a very nice project, and I think that the design is very well thought out, and I know that you've spent countless hours' time, and it's been a financial strain for you, I can see that, you've done a lot of work. I don't think that the residents of Socorro are in opposition of development, but I think that they're in opposition of the type of development. So, me being a member of this council, and my obligation and duty to the people of Socorro, and listening to their concerns, I think that right now, I'd like to make a motion on the table right now to deny the current agenda item, which is to rezone this current lot. Again, we're not in opposition of development, but I think that we're in opposition of the current development that's at stake right now. So my motion on the table right now is to go ahead and deny this item.
Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevarez.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes. So they went ahead and took the vote to deny your item. Ms. Lorraine will contact you tomorrow and provide you more information.
Who, excuse me?
Lorraine, our city planner, and provide you more information.
Okay, let me ask you just something. So basically, just because the people are opposed against this project, I can go and tell what they're doing wrong to their homes?
Sir, we've already taken the vote. They would have to suspend the rules to allow you to address the council.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevarez.
Deny.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Okay, if I'm following all the rules, code rules and everything, you're basing your decision on what? What the people are saying, or just what the people want? Because again, if that's the case, I'm also an owner of a lot in the Citos Socorro, I can go and tell them what to do, and basically, what they're doing, all the violations that they have in their current homes, right? Basically, I mean, that's what you're understanding, right?
Are you asking me, or the staff?
Yeah, I'm asking you, not you directly.
Me, the individual?
Yes.
Oh, I think that our ordinance are written in a way to where any development that wants to take place in Socorro, or any landowner that wants to develop on their property, they have the right to go through the proper protocol and steps that the city offers them, and I think that we've allowed that to happen, and we've taken each step. It's gone through the city and planning, it's gone through the zoning commission, and although they don't, although they approve this council here, the people seated at this table don't have to necessarily approve every single item that comes to this table. Again, it works both ways. We allow the people and residents of Socorro, and I know you're a property owner in Socorro, but we allow both sides to be heard at this time, that's why we have public hearing, public comment, those are the rules of the state, and I think that we've made every effort to follow those rules, and if I'm not mistaken, our attorney is present, we have followed them accordingly. I don't think that we've done anything illegal or out of line at this time. If that answered your question?
That's.
Yeah, but again, based your, you based your decision on what? What the public is saying, or basically, because I'm not following the rules to create this development?
No, I think you're following, you are following the rules and ordinance of the city. I make my decision based off of a lot of things, and I think that I've provided enough information to make my decision, and I think that when I see two documents with signatures of people who currently live in the area, and I also put myself in their shoes, because I do live in Socorro, and I don't know that I would, I would like this type of development. Again, I'm not opposed to development, I wouldn't mind a single-family home being built two houses down from me, I really don't. Again, I think the conceptual design and everything that you've put together, it's awesome, it's really nice, it's very contemporary, it's new, it would bring life to Socorro, but I'd like to see that in a different area of Socorro, if that makes sense. This area is an older part of Socorro, which I don't think that the individuals who live there would enjoy that, but I'm just trying to be cordial and answer your question, I'm not, I'm not.
No, no, me too, I'm just asking the question of if you based your decision on emotion, or really, motion or reality to the project itself.
Yes, sir. This table decides what goes and what doesn't go in this city.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, item number thirteen, public hearing of an ordinance to allow the rezoning of Lot Nine, Block One. Clint Venture Commercial Number Six and Lot Eight, Block One. Clint Venture Commercial Number Five, amending Lot Eight, located at 2585 and 2595 Darrington Road, from unclassified to C2, general commercial with a conditional use permit to allow for commercial truck parking. It is now 6:56 PM. Public hearing is now open. Do we have any speakers?
No, Mayor, we don't.
As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at 6:57 PM. Item number fourteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance to allow the rezoning of Lot Nine, Block One, Clint Venture Commercial Number Six and Lot Eight, Block One, Clint Venture Commercial Number Five, amending Lot Eight, located at 2585 and 2595 Darrington Road, from unclassified to C2, general commercial with a conditional use permit to allow for commercial truck parking. Good evening. Item number fourteen is a rezone request for 2585 and 2595 Darrington Road. The applicant is requesting that the lot, which is currently unclassified, be changed to C2 with a conditional use permit for commercial truck parking. It is, as I stated, unclassified, it is two acres in size, and currently vacant. The proposed use would be C2, general commercial for commercial truck parking. The request is to, again, approve the rezoning to unclassified, from unclassified to C2. Staff recommends approval, and the planning and zoning board concurred with that recommendation, approving the rezoning request with the conditional use permit at their February 21st meeting.
Motion to approve?
Right.
Sorry, I thought you were.
Would you like me to continue with the presentation?
Go ahead.
Sorry. This is north of the inner street in Darrington Road, and the next slide shows the unclassified areas surrounding the budding property on Darrington. Your council, I believe, has approved these two requests, these two previous requests, this is abutting a C2 and a just farther down, an M1, I'm sorry, an MU, I see MU. Next, we have properties of the, pictures of the property, it is currently vacant. The aerial photograph depicted next, again, showing the vacant lot on Darrington. Notification was sent to property owners within a 200-foot boundary of the location, no public comment was received for this request. And in summary, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from unclassified to C2 with a conditional use permit for commercial truck parking. Staff can answer any questions at this time. Questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Mr. Cruz?
The current business next door to this one here at 2595 Darrington, what type of business is that one?
I would need to check, but I believe that is also commercial truck.
It's also commercial, there's no residential around there, it doesn't disturb any residents that live in that area.
No, just those lots along, along Darrington, some of them are vacant, most of them are along the lines of trucking motor, and not all of them have gone through the process of rezoning, because they just haven't had the need to.
Okay.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevarez.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
I think she froze.
She froze.
She froze?
I'm here.
Did you freeze?
Yes, she did.
I'm here.
Yeah, you're frozen. What was your, what was your answer?
You can hear, all right? You can hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. What was your answer?
Yes. And I'll, I'm trying to, but it's not allowing me to do anything. So let me, I just shut it down, and I'll log back in, if I can.
Yeah, no, but it still has to be because of the open meetings.
Yeah, it says it's waiting for the program to.
Yeah, I believe you have to, go ahead and restart.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion for a recess of five minutes?
Motion to make a five-minute recess? Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevarez.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
She's going to start.
She's absent.
She restarted her computer.
She's resetting.
Absent. Area 702. We'll be taking a five-minute recess, if you'd like to, you know, stand up and stretch.
If you'd like to, um, you know, stand up and stretch.
Throughout that partnership, we were able to receive an in-kind donation of an architect and engineer, Ms. Olivia Terracconi, who helped us free of charge begin our journey to do emergency stabilization for the five buildings that the public was already inhabiting and using. During, uh, 2018, the National Historic Trust for Historic Preservation, uh, funded and finalized our NHL nomination to get a bid for a contractor to do said nomination. In 2018, we opened the RFP and in 2019, council awarded the contract to Front Range Associates. Front Range Associates were the technical writers that were able to compile the NHL nomination, do peer review, receive reviews from the National Park Service, scholarly review, and in 2020, we were actually able to submit our application for an NHL nomination. Next slide. However, what is an NHL nomination? An NHL nomination stands for National Historic Landmark. If given this designation, we would have the same historical significance as Agatha's Island and most notably known in Texas, the Alamo. In 2021, we did see a change in quorum members with the National Park Service Advisory Committee. As we know, when you don't have quorum, you don't have a meeting. And we were one of those victims along other NHL nominations who were about 18 months prolonged in getting our meeting. In 2021, they held a meeting in October, which you were able to be a part of. But what were we presenting? So our project partners, both at the local, state and federal level, all believed in this cause and believed in our site. The cause is, is that less than 8% of all of our historical landmarks in the country are Latino or minority represented. Less than 8% of 2,500. So it's very important that we not only preserve, protect and educate the public of our story, but also the story of Socorro and how Socorro was started. So the Rio Vista site has gone through a plethora of roles and through a plethora of owners. Most notably in the top left is the mother and daughter team of Ocala, her family, who started the poor farm for the orphanage and homeless in El Paso County. As you can see, these are articles from the newspaper that show exactly what life was like at the Rio Vista site. However, in World War II, when there was a need for workers to cultivate our crops and there was not enough workers to till the fields, the United States did a call of action to Mexico to start the first migrant labor program, which went on to be known as the Bracero Program. This is some of the propaganda that was used to go ahead and advertise the Bracero Program to the Mexican, um, government. It was an 80-20 split where 80% of the wages were covered by the United States government, 20% were funded by the Mexican government. To date, Mexico has not ponied up their 20% of the contract. The Bracero contract proves to be a continuing effort led by the Braceros that are still alive and their families of those that have passed to receive the wages that are owned by them. In these pictures, you can see what it was like on the top left, the journey that many Braceros took to apply to get a state or a federal contract. The ones in the middle show what it was like to work and the ones on the very right show exactly what they suffered in order to get their contract. Most notably is a sprain of the DDT to the Braceros when they came to apply and part of the other medical examinations that were conducted on them, which incurred dexterity in their fingers and legs, eyesight, tubercular system testing and some X-rays. These pictures show exactly what was conducted here at the Rio Vista site. The top left is the actual main building of the Rio Vista Center, which was the lunchroom for the Braceros. It was the kitchen where they received one bologna sandwich a day. In the middle, you see the courtyard of a Rio Vista site where Braceros are casually strolling through the, through the center. The back left is a wooden structure where the secretaries were housed and over a million Braceros were processed. Some of the Braceros that came to Rio Vista did not always get a contract. Some of them were turned away. So what would happen in those times is Braceros had no more money to go back home. So they would look to their other brothers to give them some funding in order to get back to where they came from. They would take trains, walk or hitchhike to come both ways, from Mexico into the United States and from the United States back home. Part of our public engagement and our partnerships featured the University of Texas at El Paso, the National Trust for Historic Preservation and the Oral History Institute. Pictured here is past leadership as well as current city manager, Ms. Adriana Rojete, participating in the first ever Bracero History Summit. Most notably, you'll see, two of our, um, presenters are in this picture. Dr. Yolanda Leva, Director for the UTEP Oral History. Dr. Yolanda Leva, Director for the UTEP Oral History Institute, and Mrs. Cela Motecasper, now the Executive Director for Latinos in Heritage Conservation. The two men pictured in this picture are actual Braceros who came from Rio Vista and were processed there. In 2022, the City of Socorro received unanimous approval for the first step in receiving NHL designation. We were awarded the first step, meaning that the advisory committee approved it. Much like the Commissions of Socorro, we passed stage one. We are now waiting to pass stage two, which would be the equivalent to the city council approval at the federal level. However, how do we preserve the past by preparing the future? In presenting our case to the Secretary of the Interior, we had to show that we were good stewards to the site, and we had well intentions of preserving the story, the history, and the momentous culture that is the Bracero movement. But why is our story so important? Of the 1 million Braceros that were processed here, there were only five Bracero processing sites in the entire United States. To date, we're the last remaining standing. There is no one else, or no one else that can share the story in the country, other than a textbook. This is going to be the future of the Rio Vista campus. When we started in 2014, I had a hand-drawn photo of what the Rio Vista site would look like, and now we have actual architectural drawings. To date, we have received back-to-back funding through the help of the Grants Department to get the CLG grant, as well as the Texas Trust Fund grant, to fund our design documents, architectural documents, and further studies to help get us on our way. Of the 1.1 million dollars that council allocated, we have leverage to receive back-to-back funding from the Texas Historical Commission, which is unheard of in the entire state. Part of our story is continuing the story of the Braceros. This picture is important because it shows homage to the actual Braceros that came before us, helped build Socorro, and in the background, you'll see our homage to agriculture, keeping it relevant and educating our future of how our city started. Popular crops that you have known are cotton, corn, chili, onions, just to name a few. The other part of our community is community celebrations and gatherings. The multi-use public event space is a continued legacy for our city. As you can see, we've taken into account all of our city's needs from the first charrette that we did in 2014, when we were listed at the Most Endangered Place by the Texas Historical Trust Fund. In that event, we had the Dallas Cowboy Cheerleaders as an attraction to go ahead and get public input to see what they wanted in the space. They wanted to see areas of congregation, areas for events, historical significance, art, and music. Here before you is one of the art installations that we received as a gift from Nomadic Art Museum, Black Cube, that represents the white flag that artist Adriana Gamas made, which featured the embroidered talons of the American bald eagle, as well as a Mexican eagle. It was intentionally done on white cotton to represent the skin weathering of the Braceros on this flag. Rewind the video. Through our funding, we've received a really, really great project partner, Chener HL, and through their firm have compiled the video to show you exactly what the future will hold for the Rio Vista campus. The center will receive a major and much-needed facelift to go ahead and create accessibility, not only for our public, but for all, including those with disabilities. We will continue to serve our population through ways of transportation, the senior center, classrooms, and the event space. This preliminary design shows you exactly what the future can be for the Rio Vista campus. It includes accessibility for food trucks throughout paved path, green spaces for people to enjoy, a covered open-air pavilion to go through at lunch for staff or anyone from the public, enjoy a good book on a weekend, or sit and enjoy one of our many festivals. The open-air covered pavilion also features space for us to feature artists, both local and touring the country. If you notice, to the left, you'll see raised garden beds, again, to pay homage not only to the Braceros teaching agriculture, but also provide programming for our public to learn more from food-to-table approaches. However, there are new things that are coming to the center, including the first-ever public library for the City of Socorro. This public library will be in the wooden structure, as you can see, and features traditional and current beams of wood that are stacked and significant to the architecture and design of the Bracero Processing Building. This is where the secretaries process the contracts, and you can see all the space was intended to be used by the public, not only for education, but also features a media center to go ahead and provide access to the internet and other educational materials. We also created it in mind to support the business and entrepreneurial sector of Socorro. I am proud to say that in 2023, Texas A&amp;M gifted us the back three buildings. We did not have to purchase them under land acquisition. Part of the economic incubator will include areas for businesses to flourish and start up, so we can support local economy. I also want to make note that the nonprofit, the City of Socorro's community initiative, is an integral part to us leveraging the funding that we're able to get. They were awarded a $750,000 grant by the Mellon Foundation to create the first-ever Bracero museum and cultural center, which will also be housed here at the Rio Vista site. Included in the entire property is our goal of also providing free Wi-Fi to the public, as well as digital books to download through the help of the Libby app. I know that we have a few of our stakeholders that have been with us from day one, so at this moment, I'd like to go ahead and welcome Mrs. Cela Motecasper to share a few words of the project.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Cela Motecasper, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to help provide my support for Rio Vista Farm Bracero Reception Center there in Socorro. My name, as mentioned, is Cela Motecasper, and in 2016, I was working for the National Trust for Historic Preservation as a senior field officer, and I was looking for a site that was looking, that was associated with the Bracero history throughout the country. And during that time, I had the honor of meeting the city, the Historic Preservation Officer, and council, and manager during that time, and began to think about what this could look like as a partnership, and had the honor and privilege of designating Rio Vista Farm as a national treasure. And a national treasure is a nationally significant site that's threatened but needs historic preservation work. And as Victor said, with the allocated 1.1 million dollars that the city had, we saw that there was a role that the National Trust could play in trying to elevate this history. But as Victor mentioned, it was just part of, you know, the stabilization was just part of it, but the overall goal that I had in mind was to designate the site as a National Historic Landmark. And for me, my background and expertise is in Latinx heritage and historic preservation, and as Victor mentioned, the numbers are very small for sites that are associated with our own histories and that celebrate our heritage. So we were just so lucky that the site was still standing and that we had a willing partner in place wanting to do all of this work. It was very multi-layered, and I had the honor of working with the city for many years and continue to support this work. So today, I just wanted to thank you for the work that council and mayor is doing and continue to support this project. As you all know, this site honors a very complex history, but a wonderful history, and one that we can educate the American public whenever they come there and just get to learn about the site through this National Historic Landmark Designation, and then all of the wonderful reuse that Victor and Chener HL are working on. I also wanted to give a special recognition to Dr. Leva and UTEP, and just sharing that a lot of the public history component of this would not have been possible without all of the tremendous work and leadership that they have done toward this project. So with that, I just want to applaud the city and your efforts, and hope that you can continue to work and advocate for the site for its ongoing sustainability and storytelling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cela. As Cela mentioned, oral history is such an integral part to the story. There's Braceros who have passed, unfortunately, that we're not able to meet. However, Dr. Yolanda Leva runs, is the Director for the UTEP Oral History Institute. There are several videos you can find on YouTube, one of which is "The Harvest of Loneliness", that captures kind of testimonies and discussions of Braceros and the treatment. One that stands out is a woman who lost her child while her father, or its father and her husband were on a farm contract, and she told him, "You never got to meet your child. You never got to grieve with me. I experienced it on my own." So there was a connotation or a stereotype that it was such a negative program, and you heard about the eighty-twenty split. So there was such like a negative connotation that we assumed when we were researching the site history. However, with the help of Dr. Leva, we've been able to actually speak to Braceros who have told us, even though some conditions were harsh, they allowed for a better future for our family and our further generations of family. So I would like to welcome Ms. Dr. Yolanda Leva to the table to go ahead and share a little bit about her work with the project.
Thank you, Victor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm very happy to be here today to talk about Rio Vista. Somehow, ever since I moved back to El Paso and began my position as professor at UTEP, Socorro has been calling me since the very beginning. And my first project when I returned to El Paso was with Socorro, so it's coming full circle now after twenty-something years to be working with Rio Vista. The Institute of Oral History has collected over 700 oral histories with former Braceros, and we're still interviewing men who were processed at Rio Vista. Thanks to Victor Retta's connections, we found a new abuelito who was processed at Rio Vista. We'll be interviewing him next week. On Monday, I am going to Rio Vista accompanied by Ms. Celia Burton, who was a clerk at Rio Vista in 1952. So even though that generation is leaving us, there's still people around that hold that history that's so important to the history of the United States, the history of Mexico, and definitely the history of Socorro. We've spent the past, we being myself, several research assistants. We have spent the past year, all of 2022, researching the Bracero program. This year, we are developing the individual exhibits that will go into the rooms. There'll be a room that introduces people to the Bracero program, and we're thinking of it as following the route of the Braceros themselves. There's a Mexico room, there's a transportation room, the US room. We'll have a room for videos, and then what I'm really, I'm excited about all of it. I'm really excited about having an oral history component where people, visitors, will be able to tell their stories. Their stories of Socorro, their stories of Bracero and their family, and that the museum will be able to hold those stories on an ongoing basis. So thank you for all the work that you have done, Mayor and City Council. And I just want to let you know that your staff, Victor I've been working with for many years now, your staff are just wonderful, hardworking, and very dedicated people who love Socorro very much, and it's a joy to work with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to note that part of that $750,000 was to contract Dr. Leva and her team to do all of the artifact collection for us for the museum. So before I introduce Mr. Vance Kelly, I want to show how the stream started. It's literally a diagram with handwritten sketches and ideas in 2018. And this was before we received any funding. I was like, oh, this is a pipe dream. But now, we are so, so fortunate to have a professional engineer and architect that were gifted to us through a grant, that we have these professional design documents. So they literally took a little piece of paper that the public gave us ideas on and have now professionally configured a layout for the entire campus and how everything will flow and be built, and in nine years, this is where we're at now, right? So we're so, so, so fortunate that we have partners at the table that have been with us this long. It's been a long nine years to go from dirt parking lots to paved parking lots, just to be an example, but also emergency stabilization to now construction. So I'd like to welcome Mr. Vance Kelly from Chener HL, who's our consultant for Architecture and Design Services, to talk a little bit about the project.
Thank you, Victor. Mayor and City Council, I'm happy to be here this evening to talk with you about this project. I've spent my entire career working on older and historic buildings, and in fact, I spent the last ten years trying to assist underrepresented communities because the stories are so important and need to be told. And this particular site is an important historic site that can be rehabilitated and can be developed into a vibrant community center containing a mixed-use concept that allows activities to occur during daylight hours, normal business hours, and yet also to be able to function after hours for special events, allows the community to be able to utilize buildings in order to have private events as well. So it's intended to be a true community center for the City of Socorro. It's been an important project for us. We've been working hard with your staff. The design is complete for the master plan. The design is complete for the library. The engineers, the mechanical, electrical, structural engineers should have their final documents to us before the end of the month for Task Two, which deals with the exterior rehabilitation, as well as then Task Three, which deals with the interior design for all the buildings, so that we can see how each of these buildings can contribute to the community. This is, like I mentioned, it's exciting. We're nearing the completion of this next phase, and we're excited about the possibilities of also moving into Task Four and Five that are dealing with the site utility master plans, so that the infrastructure can be installed around and within the facility, so that buildings then can be brought onboard as funding is available. And that includes Building Seventeen, that can be part of the museum that you've heard about, as well as Building Six, that can be part of the clinic that can serve the community. So I'm happy to be here tonight. I appreciate the support of the staff, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
All in all, we've estimated that the entire project will cost about $33 million due to inflation. However, from that 1.1 million dollars that we started out with, we've already incorporated ARPA funding, we've incorporated grants, and we just recently had meetings with both of our Congress reps, Tony Gonzalez, as well as Veronica Escobar, to go after congressional appropriations to get that funding for our site. At this time, I'd like to welcome our city manager to provide any comments, concerns, or feedback. Your feedback, ma'am.
So this has been a long project that we've been working and been very aggressive. I think the next two years, like I told staff this morning, is aggressively for this next two years, we're going to go after that funding and get this project done. I think that if we do and are able to bring this project, this will turn Socorro into a different city completely, right? So that's our objective. I do have a staff that works really, really hard, and all we really need is your support, and, you know, let us do our thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there an action? Is there a motion?
Was there a motion on the table?
Motion to approve?
Correct, so we want to, we want the motion just to make sure that we're in the right path. Right, that we're following, I guess, your vision also, in what we see that you concur with our vision.
Motion to approve? Your vision, right?
Second the agenda I...
Well, the plans, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Item number twenty-seven, discussion in action to approve the appointment of Rafael Padilla to the... Discussion and action to approve the appointment of Rafael Padilla to the Historical Landmark Commission, Place Two.
Motion to approve?
Ruben Reyes's absence, Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Item number twenty-eight. Swearing in a newly appointed commissioner.
Motion to approve? Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Gun happy? Oh, I want us. Approved.
You beat me to it.
I have a lot of experience in this.
There you go. Okay, please repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
Rafael Padilla.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully, faithfully execute.
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of the Historical Landmark Commission?
Of the Historical Landmark Commission.
Of the city of Socorro, Texas?
Of the city of Socorro, Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my abilities.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
Aye?
Aye.
Please state your name.
Rafael Padilla.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid?
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
Offered, promised to pay?
Offered, promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute?
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value?
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public or employment?
Or promised any public or employment.
As reward to secure my appointment?
As reward to secure my appointment.
Or confirmation thereof?
Or confirmation thereof.
Congratulations.
I'm just happy to be back after twenty-two years. Yes.
Welcome back.
Yes, please.
Under the mercy of God.
So we're moving on to Recreation Center. Item number fifteen. Discussion and action on selection and approval of the contract for the pyrotechnic display for the Independence Day Extravaganza. Fireworks and alcohol permit.
Motion to approve? Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am coming before you to request direction on which show you would like to have done at our annual Independence Day Extravaganza. This year is scheduled to be on Saturday, July the first. Sorry, Ms. Curtis. On July the first. Due to inflation, we went out to quote three different companies. We received three different amounts. One of which was actually zero dollars because they were completely booked. They were not the vendor that we typically use. The two that we do use, one came back and said they were unavailable for that date and requested to come back the week after or the week before. The local vendor can do July the first and gave us two packages that were including your backup, one for twenty thousand and one for thirty thousand, the difference being the length of the show that you're requesting. Staff is requesting approval to do the local vendor, with whichever show you decide to go ahead and go on. I know the sticker price of twenty and thirty thousand is a lot. However, we do go after sponsorships every year to go ahead and offset that cost. And the vendor is the same one, the one that we're proposing is the one that did the show last year. Mr. Nevares?
And how long is the difference between the two?
Eight minutes.
So one being?
One being fifteen to eighteen minutes and one being nineteen to twenty-five minutes. I also want to make note that the difference is also in the shell size, which changes the overall shape of the firework. The much larger ones need a larger shell size.
Let's go big.
What have we typically gone with? So we went with a thirty thousand package last year that was a lot less. Due to constraints and supply chain demand, he gets a lot of his pyrotechnic supplies from China. It's been a little harder for him to get supplies here in the States, so that's why he's having to up his prices. I did include that reasoning in the backup as well. But last year's package is this year's thirty thousand package.
Okay.
We can also shave off the time. If you prefer doing the larger shell size but want to come down in price, we can ask him to provide that as well. The reason that I brought it to council is because it's around the corner and I wanted to lock in the vendor. Mr. Garcia?
So the bigger size, the bigger time is twenty to twenty-five minutes?
Roughly.
So that would be the thirty thousand?
Mr. Cruz?
So if we put the display closer, they'll look larger.
I like that thinking. I also requested for me to get certified as a pyrotechnic, you know.
Be under it.
I like to call it an interactive display.
I'd like to amend my motion to approve with the thirty thousand dollar package, please.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Cesar Nevares.
Oh, yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz. And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Item number sixteen. Discussion and action to ratify the updated bylaws by the Historic Landmark Commission.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. After a long discussion with our attorney as well as the commission, we went ahead and made some changes to the bylaws that everyone felt was good, one of which was our concerns regarding quorum. We weren't able to meet quorum because we needed five out of the seven, so we've brought that back down to three. Legal went ahead and reviewed it and improved it, so that we were able to address that issue to have the backlog of cases. The other one was addressing some of the out-of-date information. I should probably have led with this. They hadn't updated our bylaws since nineteen nineties, as well as our guidelines, so that was part of our process. They asked for their agenda items to be faxed back in the day, and now we use email. So one of those things was just cutting out that outdated language. The other one was plain and simple roles responsibilities outlining chair, vice chair, secretary, HPO. We cleaned up the language with Marwan from our legal department. And then we also included the components of the outside residency. So it allows for two members of the commission to not be residents of Socorro, but the bulk majority, the five, do need to live in Socorro.
Motion to approve? Second.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz. And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Moving on to city manager. Item number eighteen. Discussion and action to approve the extension of delinquent municipal fees, fines and fees account collection services with the law firm of Delgado, Costa, Spencer, Lineberger, and Perez LLP for an additional year through October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and authorize the city manager her designated to execute the services agreement and other documents necessary to engage the law firm.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This action approves City of Socorro to continue using Delgado, Costa, Spencer, Lineberger, and Perez LLP to collect our delinquent warrant collections through October of this year.
Motion to approve? Second.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz. And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Item number nineteen. Discussion and action to approve the FY twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four budget calendar.
Motion to approve? Second.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. In the packet, we are proposing our budget calendar. We are recommending Saturdays to have our workshops. I believe our budget workshops ran smoothly last year, and we were able to meet quorum requirements. But you, it's really up to council whether you wish otherwise.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Item number twenty. Discussion and action to approve travel for the Legislative Liaison Committee to testify in the eighty-eighth legislative session.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The City of Socorro currently finds itself in a position of opportunity. Opportunity that will enhance the quality of life, boost economic development, and create jobs beyond imaginable. Strategy and the ability to position the strengths of this table should come without personal desire, but the desire to help the city in our current capable state. The Legislative Committee is responsible for appearing before the state legislature, establishing and maintaining close contacts among legislative committees and individual legislators, attending and testifying at hearings, and scheduling witnesses are also one of the important duties. Therefore, we are requesting approval for travel in advance as we will have to, will have very little time to know when these meetings will be taking place as they happen within seventy, seventy-two hours that they have to post. So we want to have approval beforehand.
Mr. Cruz?
Will Ralph Duran and Ivan be available to present in the summary that states, that state those names?
Oh, I apologize.
I know it's a mistake, but I just, for the record.
On our backup?
Yeah.
Forty years, twenty twenty-one.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we should have cut that and addressed that.
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed.
Motion to approve? Second.
And just for the record, our committee members are Alejandro Garcia and Mr. Rudy Cruz, Jr.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz. And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Moving on to Mayor and Council. Item number twenty-one. Discussion and action on approving city manager's yearly evaluation. On this one, this is just a evaluation that happens every year. What I'm going to do for this one is not read all of the evaluation. We have all of council's evaluations, so I'm just going to read the last portion. The last, what the final.
Tally.
Tally was. Do you want me to read names? Does it matter?
You don't have to.
I gave the city manager a four. Her future development would be list, list performance goals for the city manager that you feel are most important targets. These goals can be short-term within next evaluation or within the year. So the goals would be make sure a balanced budget is provided, monitors and manages fiscal activities of the city in coordination with the chief financial officer. Economic development, new infrastructure projects with city council. Overall rating, as I mentioned, I gave her a four. I believe overall, she does a great job at addressing citizens' needs. May need a little bit more time with some council members. At large, would like future development, a very important long-term goal that he would like to see is in the greater retirement for our city employees. One that will benefit and allow employees a peace of mind for the future. His overall rating was a five. And he quoted, well, he mentions the success of the city starts with great leaders, followed by employees that take pride working on our city. The ear of the leader must ring with the voices of the people. Quoted Woodrow Wilson. District One gave the city manager overall five. Achievements, overall performance and development of city staff, and future development, continue to empower and motivate our city staff. District Two, overall, five. The city manager has secured multiple funding sources for major projects for the city. ARPA estimated eight million dollars to be utilized for twenty-four projects throughout the city's department. Texas Water Development Board estimated nine million for the Sparks Royal Project assist with flooding. City manager and her team have received grant funding as of January twenty twenty-three in among five billion, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. The largest public service category receiving grants are infrastructure, seventy-one percent, and public safety, twenty-six percent. Projects in the progress, Rio Vista and Bobe Bridge Expansion, Passmore Shared Use Path, Arturo One, Maua Weco Tanks Road, Rio Vista Farm Complex, Upgrading of Dispatch Center, completion of Cielo Claro Park, Cougar Park upgrades, the hiring of three new engineering firms. District Three would like to see the city manager delegate more of the work to the department heads. Feel that the city manager finds herself in a position of having to take the hands-on approach way too often. Would like to see the city manager have a stronger presence with outside entities within the county. Overall rating, four. Achievements, the ability to manage a group of people and task them with carrying out the requests of council, the ability to work with individuals in all departments to accomplish the goals of the city set forth by the city council, ability to keep the city within budget and still carry out new projects. And District four, strong women with cast iron abilities to strive constantly, reaching further and looking into better and bigger opportunities for the city and staff. This are achievements. Future developments, to set aside negative personal feelings and focus on merging the issue to an existing similar implementing plan city already holds, or respectfully address the issue and explain in detail the concern and negative impact of proposed issue. Overall rating, a four. In reference to this evaluation is, and its questions, questions were answered solely on my personal experience. My knowledge with the city manager and city staff could be different from other council members. Overall, in my opinion, the city of Socorro has a fine city manager who is incomparable to past city managers. Those were all the evaluations for the city manager. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Garcia?
Um, with approval of this, is there a certain percentage that are, that with, it's a favorable rating? Is there a percentage-wise that she does?
Right. So, the, the minutes when council approved the addendum last year, read, uh, three percent bonus the first year of her annual salary. That was last year. This year, we're in, based on the minutes, five percent bonus the second year and five percent of her annual, um, salary.
Right.
With a favorable, um, evaluation.
Okay, so with a favorable evaluation, um...
I don't think we're done with the year, though. This is, this is just the second one, right?
No, so, so it's, so it'd be the second twelfth month, and it was adopted in March of last year, so it is, we are in the, in the...
In the second year, but not ending.
Correct. So, it would be affect, it's a one-time bonus that is triggered with her evaluations that occur in March of this year. So, it, it's not until the end of the year, if that makes sense.
Yes, that's what...
Okay, so, my, my recommendation, especially with everything that's going on in El Paso, is giving the city manager a lump sum instead of adding, uh, to her annual, um, her annual, um, pay raise.
Percentage.
Percentage, because, uh, if we do, if it's a five percent now, that we have five percent next year, and we're looking at a, in two years, a fif- ten percent increase. So, my worry is that we will be paying a lot more, not a lot, but a substantial amount. It'll be a compounding bonus as we go up. This year will be sixty-two hundred, next year will be sixty-five hundred, or sixty-eight hundred, excuse me, and so on and so forth. So, I would like to make a motion to approve a one-time bonus, uh, of six thousand dollars, or the five percent, I'm sorry, and not add it to her annual income, because that would save the city money. Our constituents deserve that, and we are looking at, um, something where we, she gets approved with a favorable, and next year we'll revisit again, but it won't be, it won't go up in price yearly. It'll stay the same as her income is now, and that's, uh, something that I would like to do to make sure that our constituents know we're thinking about their tax money going and not quadrupling in three years.
Mr. Cruz?
So, I, if I'm not mistaken, I think what you're, what you're considering right now is, is approval of, of the current agenda item right now for, for fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-three, but I think the changes or that, that you're requesting would have to go through a contract amendment, and that would be, that would have to be brought up at a later time, or I'm, I'm not understanding.
No, the contract currently allows for a, it actually calls for a one-time bonus of five percent this year, uh, of her annual salary. And so, that is, I believe, what Mr. Garcia was, was, uh, making a motion for. So, it's not, you're not, um, increasing the, the annual salary. That, that's not what we're saying. That was not actually the addendum. Um, that was in the minutes last year. Um, rather, the addendum calls for a percentage bonus of her annual, um, salary contingent on favorable evaluations which were met, and so, um, it would be the five percent of her annual salary, a one-time bonus kind of thing.
So, my, my theory would be, and the math is, let's say she gets paid a hundred and thirty thousand right now, it would jump to a hundred and thirty-six thousand. The next year, it would jump to one hundred and forty-seven, if my math is correct, and the next year will be one hundred and fifty-three thousand. So, that's, that's a big jump for us, um, and it's just compounding. It's like compounding interest almost, and I just want to make sure that we, we give her an amount of five percent of her check, but it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, jump exponentially, and we, it runs away from us like it did in El Paso.
As an annual salary.
Yes.
So, what are you proposing then?
So, so if...
It's just a lump sum right now, and we...
One, one moment, one moment. So, if we were to go with this lump sum, uh, when would be, when would it be paid out?
Now.
At the end of, now? Not at the end of the year, when?
In other words, you, there's terms in the, in the, um, employment agreement that are triggered with the yearly evaluations. You're at the yearly evaluation time period, and so that has triggered terms in, uh, the city's contract with the city manager, and that trigger is the bonus.
Okay, right.
The one-time bonus.
Because last year, it was, it was in March when we had the evaluation, so we're in March.
Correct. March is your, uh, yearly mark, if you would.
Right.
Mr. Garcia?
Yeah.
You want to explain?
Yeah, so, that's where, um, I want to make sure that she'll stay, uh, at what, if we go five percent, five, that's fifteen percent in three years of her salary now, um, which is one of our highest-paid employees. So, five percent of where she is now, it would be a lot easier to pay in the coming years than the five per, fifteen percent from now, or twenty percent in four years. So, that's my motion, is to pay the lump sum right now at her ba, at her, at her pay, um, and not add it to her annual income.
And just for clarification of the record, Mr. Garcia, are you making a motion to approve a one-time?
Yes.
Bonus that is five percent of her annual salary?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Based on a favorable evaluation?
Yes, ma'am, exactly.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, public hearing on written charge to remove Robert Renteria from the Board of Adjustments, Place Seven, of the City of Socorro, Texas.
Motion to approve?
Uh, this is a public hearing. It is eight-ten. Public hearing is now open. No speakers?
We don't have anyone signed up.
No, okay. As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at eight-eleven. Item number twenty-three, discussion and action to approve, on approval to remove Robert Renteria from the Board of Adjustments, Place Seven, on the ci, of the City of Socorro, Texas.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Renteria has had many, uh, absences and therefore caused no quarrel, and that is the reason why, uh, we're asking for a removal.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Villalobos?
Just, real quick, did he respond to the letter sent to him, or did, did, or a phone call?
Did he respond?
We sent him a letter, but...
But no response, no response.
Okay, thank you.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-four, public hearing on writ charge to remove Emmanuel Nevares from the Board of Adjustments, Place One, of the City of Socorro, Texas. It is now eight-twelve PM. Public hearing is open. As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at eight-twelve PM. Item number twenty-five, discussion and action on approval to remove Emmanuel Nevares from the Board of Adjustments, Place One, of the City of Socorro, Texas.
Motion to approve?
Second. And if I may, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Of no relation to me.
And question here.
What is the, what is the, um, reason for removal?
Uh, the same, uh, attendance issue.
Attendance, okay.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Sorry.
What?
I'm sorry, guys.
I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Yes, uh-huh. Same question as the other one. Did he respond to the letter, or any phone call?
No, no response.
Thank you.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-nine, discussion and action to approve a potential mural painting, a request space owned by the City of Socorro to promote local...
Mayor, you have skipped number twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry. Item number twenty-six, discussion and action to approve Resolution seven forty-three for International Women's Day, March eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve?
Second. Uh, if I may, real quick, it's just, uh, woman, it was, um, on March eighth, it was, uh, International Women's Day, uh, very special to me as a father and a son, and knowing our fathers here, uh, it's a special day for us in the sense where, um, we want to make sure we empower our people in our lives, and now with an all-female, uh, cabinet right here, right now, it's really, it's really, um, brought to your emotion because it just happened to be that way, and we make sure that, uh, that the City of Socorro is behind every and a woman who, uh, is triumphing here in the City of Socorro and in the County of El Paso. Thank you. Especially our mayor and our District Four.
Thank you. Ruben Reyes's absence, Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-nine, discussion and action to approve a potential mural painting, request space owned by the City of Socorro to promote local artists and enhance the beauty of our city through art. Mr. Cruz?
Uh, so, Mayor and Council, thank you. This item here, uh, I wanted to present, and again, it's, it's discussion and, uh, locating a potential, um, area within our city where we can, uh, showcase, uh, a mural, and if I, if I can ask for Gabriel to, to approach the podium, if, if you don't mind, Gabriel. Uh, if you guys don't know Gabriel, he's an El Paso, uh, native. He moved back from Seattle. Uh, you may have seen some of his work here in El Paso over at, um, Savage Goods, Masimeno's, and Gold's Gym at the Traywood location, and he's, he's very well-known throughout the area. Um, you may have seen him also because you're also a part-owner of the, uh, the Moonlight.
The Moonlight, Adobe Hall.
Adobe Hall as well, and what I wanted to do is, I don't believe that, uh, that we've, we've been able to showcase some of his art within the city, and I know that there may be some, some eyesores maybe that we went, gonna cover up with a nice mural, um, but I believe Gabriel wanted to speak a little bit to that, if, 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 if you'd like to.
Um, well, I mean, I would just love to do something, you know, for the community that I serve. Uh, as you, you may or may not know, I, uh, I, uh, I own the business of the Moonlight Adobe Hall. Uh, we try to help out the community by, uh, opening the space for public events. Uh, we also let the, uh, the City of Socorro also come and u- utilize the space, uh, before the real, um, what's it called?
Rio Vista.
The Rio Vista, uh, office, but what I would like to do is just kind of enhance the, uh, the beauty of the city by just kind of interpreting some kind of artwork that I would love to work with you all to get an approval and, uh, see a, a site-specific work that you guys might have available.
Thank you, and, and so this item here, it's really not really taking action on a, on a specific site. It's only to, to maybe have, uh, the, the staff locate and identify an area where they think, I feel, it would fit best, and I think the staff, uh, has a better idea of where something like this would go. I would leave it up to staff.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I just have a, I think Mr. Duran had some, uh, before had something with the storage place where they have like a big wall that they wanted to paint. Have you spoken to them? You might want to try with them and, and see if we can maybe make that really nice for the, for the citizens.
Well, we'll, our, our, uh, public information officer getting in contact with you, and then you guys can...
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members.
Thank you.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number thirty, discussion and action to approve participation in the Bi-National Tourism Conference, September twenty twenty-three. Mr. Cruz?
Thank you. Uh, this item right here, I believe was brought, um, a, a while back, but there was, there was no, uh, decision made on it, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, city manager, do you, was, was this item ever brought in, into, uh, council as an agenda item before?
So, it was brought for September twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, okay.
Yes.
So, this is twenty twenty-three, and, and what I wanted to, um, to let everyone know, and I, I think, and I feel that it's important, uh, that, that we participate in the Bi-National Tourism, uh, Conference, because, uh, as you can see, Mr. Reto's presentation earlier just proves how significant the, the history and the culture here in our city is, is, uh, important, and, and I believe that Socorro is becoming one of the more influential cities along the historical trail, and so I, I'd like to restore and revitalize these areas, um, within our city, but I think it's with the efforts of, of conferences like this, the Bi-National Tourism Conference, um, I'd like the participation of the city. Uh, it's going to gain notoriety, and at the same time, I feel that when the city is involved in the organization and planning of this, and we take on full financial responsibility, um, this right here is, is going to, uh, allow the city to go after unique, uh, grant funding, because that's the only way that we're gonna be able to, to get, um, the financial, I mean, the, the, the money that we need to be able to do the things that we want to with all the historical areas in our, in our city. I've also invited Mr. Alborrego, if, if you don't mind, Al, come up to the, to the podium, uh, because I know that we did this last year, but I, I feel that this year, it's gonna be a little bit different, and what I mean by that, Al, is it's gonna be different in the sense that what happens in the City of Socorro will take, will take the, the financial responsibility should this council decide to move forward with it, and at the same time, uh, we, we want to be the, the, um, the ones in charge of anything that happens here, so we'll be the ones putting together the agenda items and, and the speakers and the times and the itinerary, but we want to be able to work alongside you as well to make sure that it's, uh, it's, it's transparent, and it's, it's just something that, that's gonna be able to, to work. And so I wanted to, if you had anything to share with us right now, the, the floor's all yours, Al.
Thanks. Good evening, uh, Mayor, Council, staff, all of you work so hard. Um, yeah, this is gonna be fun. It's gonna be a, the same thing. This will be our, um, we call it the third because we changed, uh, organizations, uh, a couple of years ago, but, uh, this will be my tenth, uh, Bi-National Conference, and yes, last year was great. We worked with the City of Socorro, as you know, and, uh, and Victor, it worked, uh, it worked really well. Uh, I think everybody was happy with, uh, the turnout and everything that we did. It, uh, it kinda has evolved into a two-city thing, San Luis San Diego and Socorro. Last year, of course, Socorro was a focal point, because we had all the conference part and everything here, and then, uh, when it comes to the sister-city part of it, um, it, it, uh, switches into, uh, two cities, because we actually sister-cited twenty cities last year during the conference, ten here and ten in San Luis San Diego. Um, so this year, it's gonna be in San Luis San Diego, but then the sister-city part, which would be great, I don't think Gabriel's there yet, um, the... the sister-city part, which would be great, I don't think Gabriel's there yet, um, the, which would be great, and we kinda had a little bit of conversation about it, would be great to have, uh, the, we did the sister-city part here last year, and then we did it at the Adobe Horseshoe for San Elise, but we had it here, then we took, uh, everybody from the, well, not every single buddy, but the majority of the people went to San Elisaio, and we did the ceremony over there for sister-cities, and then we moved back over here, but, uh, so it'll be backwards this year, it's gonna be over there, and then on Saturday, the plan right now is Saturday around two is head to Socorro, so we talked about to make it easier to maybe have it like at your place, and, uh, and focus on the actual trail, so, uh, that's kind of where it's at now, kind of a thought things, I guess that's why we're here, and, uh, and see what, what the City of Socorro wants to do this year, I don't think it'll be very much, because it'll be minimal, uh, although big, so we're looking at, right now, we have three new sister-cities, uh, that we're doing, uh, all three of them are UNESCO World Heritage Sites already, they're designated, so that would add, that'd make five total that we have, and, uh, it's just growing the Camino Real all the way south, we keep going south, and then, uh, that's the Mexican ones, and then looks like we're gonna have Española, New Mexico this year, as part of it as well, and I'm bringing in two cities from Spain that'll become sister-cities as well, so, uh, that's where we're at with it, so, that's another, another, uh, what, six more, more cities, and maybe Chihuahua, if we can get Chihuahua together, they're having political problems, but, uh, if we can get them together by then, by September, we'll add that as well.
So, long story short, at the end of the day, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to do here and establish is, is recognition at the federal level, and in order to do that, we have to be part of the, the UNESCO, because that's the only way you're gonna get recognition, and that's the only way you're gonna be able to go after that, tho- those, those federal, uh, the grant funding, correct?
At the end of the day, that's where, that's where we wanna be.
That's what we're shooting for, we wanna rehabilitate the, the Mission Trail, it's gaining traction right now, we can't stop right now, this is the only way we're gonna be able to do it, so, uh, our investment right now, it, it may be, uh, a, a small investment, but at the end of the day, I think it, the payoff is big.
Yeah, the key is to have Socorro in the game.
Yes.
Bottom line, just to have it in the game, always on top of it, always part of it, uh, we're the key cities here in the US, we're the ki- key cities here in, uh, in the beginning of the trails, so, and then we're bringing in the end, which is Española, which is right next to Okeo Wenge, and, uh, we'll start combining everybody, we, we're in a good spot right now with all that.
And, and just for clarification, it's September ninth, and it'll be at Adobe Hall? Is that what you're requesting?
Basically, yeah, that's, that's what we're looking at.
So we would have to coordinate with Adobe Hall?
Right.
And make it happen over there, on the ninth?
You don't have to, I mean, you can have it wherever you want to, but I think it'd be great, you know, I think it'd be a great spot, uh, it's right there, it's right there by the Mission, so, it's... See, we can use it all year, no, I'm just kidding, yeah, thanks, yeah, the day, the night, yeah, that would be the ninth, um, we'd be, we, we could head down here, just to give you a really good idea of timeline, like around two o'clock, we could head over here and do the ceremony and everything, and, you know, last year was just the mayor here when we did the ceremony, so, be nice to have more of you here, or, and, and invite the public, and let's get it to that level, but, uh, yeah, it's, we're looking good, we're looking good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you said I was gonna be number eleven, not number thirty, I'm just kidding.
Oops, sorry.
We don't have a motion.
We don't, do we have a, uh, motion? Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Israel Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colomilla Lobos?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to go into executive?
Do we have executive?
Yes, we have the Texas Gas.
Motion to move to executive?
Executive.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Israel Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colomilla Lobos?
Yes.
It is eight twenty-seven PM, we are moving into executive.
Unmuted.
It is eight forty-three P.M. We are now in regular session. Do we have a motion to delete items thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three?
Motion to delete items thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three.
Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number thirty-four, discussion and action regarding Texas Gas Service Company, a Division of One Gas Inc.'s application for an interim rate adjustment filed with the Railroad Commission of Texas and municipal regulatory authorities on March tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Let's make a motion to suspend for forty-five days the effective date of the proposed rate increase from the effective date of May ninth and approval of the resolution.
Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Meeting adjourns at eight forty-four P.M. Good night.